Sam Clark, October 26, 2010, Commissioner's meeting will come to order. We'll call on Mr. Johnson for the invocation.
Pray with me, please. Heavenly Father, again, we thank you for this opportunity, Father, to do the work of this county, and we pray that you would give your wisdom to us, the wisdom of Christ. We pray that we'll put that wisdom to use, and that it'll glorify you and it'll best serve the folks of this county. We thank you for the many blessings that are ours, and we offer this prayer in Christ's name, amen.
Amen. I understand for Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call on Mr. Mashburn for adjustments to the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I have no adjustments to the agenda this evening.
Okay. Are there any adjustments to the agenda, additions? Okay. If not, I will call on Mr. Stewart, Kelly Stewart, Sergeant Kelly Stewart, Norfolk Highway Patrol, presentation of special recognitions and awards. Mr. Johnson will do that for us.
Yes.
David? Yeah.
..................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
Mr. Chairman, I may be out of order, but before they leave, I just think we owe them a round of applause for the work that they do.
(APPLAUSE).
Thank you for the job you do. Thank you.
Yep.
This time we're going to public hearing. I will call on Mr. Donald Hicks.
Thank you, Mr. Norman and fellow chair members. As stated at the last meeting, we just would like to do an amendment to the 2006 scattered site rehabilitation grant. We are reducing the homes from 15 to 10, which 10 is what we actually have completed. And then the second public hearing would be for Commissioner Norman to have the ability to sign off on the final paperwork for the closeout of the 2006 grant.
Are there any questions, Mr. Hicks, from anyone in the audience, or commissioners? Okay. If you move over to the next item.
That was the two.
Actually, he presented both of them at the same time, so you're ready to proceed with the hearing now.
Do we have anyone in order wishing to speak this time? You may do so. If not, any commissioners, any questions? No, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve this amendment and closeout request, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any questions regarding the motion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed. I'll say, thank you, Mr. Hicks.
Thank you.
Mr. Mashburn, I'll move on over to you.
We, the first item that we have, and I just want to make sure with the clerk here that the minutes will reflect that both hearings were open and both hearings were closed and that comments remain. Okay, thank you. The first item that we have is a request for the adoption of an Iredell County Language Access Plan, and this is required by the North Carolina Department of Commerce, Division of Community Assistance, for the Scattered Site Housing Grant, which is the grant that we just had the, held the hearing on. This is the 2006 Scattered Site Rehabilitation Grant Program. Susan Blumenstein, our Finance Director, will make that presentation and respond to questions concerning this.
Included in your agenda package is a copy of a language access plan that was provided by the Department of Commerce, Division of Community Assistance. This is the template that they are requiring that we adopt. It is similar in form to the almost exact same plan that's been adopted for the Iredell County Health Department and the Iredell County Department of Social Services. What I've been told by the Department of Commerce is that without adoption of this plan, there is a possibility of loss of federal funds, loss of future federal and state funding. We could be subject to legal actions from legal services organizations and private individuals. There could be HUD or EEO investigations, and the U.S. Department of Justice or the Office for Civil Rights still have the authority to investigate claims of discrimination. The Compliance Office, once it is approved by the Board, the Compliance Office at Department of Community, Division of Community Assistance will provide, they'll review the plan and approve the plan, then they will provide posters, resources to post and use for the language access. When the grant is monitored, the grant reps will monitor for compliance and will be subject to random reviews from Title VI. If we don't receive the, or approve the LAP plan if the Board doesn't and it's not received by Department of Commerce, they can freeze funds. If the county has more than one language that would meet the threshold, we would have to translate documents, but for now, the only documents that have to be translated are those into Spanish unless it's a specific request. One of the questions I ask, it's also posted in a presentation they send, is why is this a new requirement from DCA? And they say that the Language Access Plan is not a new federal requirement. HUD has reissued notice that all grantees must be in compliance with the Language Access Plan through the, through the offices, including DCA. It's our role as the grantees are meeting all requirements, federal regulations for CDBG and any other federal funding. So this is going to become more and more an issue with audits that are performed for federal and state funding.
So you're saying this is no different from the Health Department or the Social Service when it comes to language?
The, the only difference that I'm aware of is that this is specifically states CDBG and Department of Community Assistance, where theirs refer to Department of Health and Human Services.
Okay. Any questions to Ms. Blumenstein?
Madam Clerk, did, do you have a copy of the Language Access Plan that, that I wanted to submit to the Commissioners tonight?
Yes, sir.
And do you have, do you happen to have that?
I have the copy that I printed out, yes, sir.
The one that I've?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is there a copy for everybody?
I've got some of that.
Yeah.
Or we got a couple.
I don't have a copy for some reason. Everybody have one?
No.
No, just, just this one?
That's the same one that you sent?
That's the same one I sent via email.
Okay, yeah, I've read it.
Ms. Blumenstein, first of all, I know this is not your fault.
And all I can say is I'd be glad to pass it on to Department of Community Assistance, but we're required to have it there within, an adopted plan within five days after today's meeting.
I understand, and I, and I see here that it's, it's effective September 30th, which is several days ago.
That's correct. That was their deadline, and we got the letter on October 15th.
And I understand from a conversation with the manager that, that we've been complying with this for quite some time.
That's correct.
So it's not as if we weren't complying with it, it's, it's just that they needed this paperwork to show that we have been complying and will continue to comply.
Yes, sir.
What raised an eyebrow when I started reading this some days ago was that I, I read your, the brief summary here of Title VI, and I, you know, I don't know what Title VI says exactly, but I know what this brief says, and this brief says, "Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964 prohibits discrimination based on race, color, or national origin by any entity receiving federal financial assistance." Now, we receive federal financial assistance, particularly in this case, and so that means that a law was passed that says we cannot discriminate based on race, color, or national Is there any other wording that I'm unaware of that, that, that we have to, is there any other requirement that we have to meet other than this brief that I'm reading here, or is it more complicated than that?
I can't answer that, Dr. Cadel. The only thing I can say is that what was provided by DCA is what they are requiring that the county adopt, that includes the language access for limited English proficient people.
And so the instruction you got was that, basically, they drafted a document for you and said?
That's correct.
You have to adopt it. This isn't the county's wording, this is their wording, and they said, "You change, you know, a period or a comma in this, and we're going to reject it." Is that?
That, I did not ask them if we could change a period or a comma. That's the document that they provided, and it is, I can't say that it is word for word what Health Department, DSA has have in place, but from the review that I made, it's at least 98% the same.
Ms. Campbell, I see you back there. Do you have any insight on, on this? You've been dealing with it longer, I suppose?
It's a requirement from Title VI, and so we had to implement it quite a while ago, and have followed it based on the template that they sent us.
Well, the amendment that I presented, and I guess you have a copy there in front of you, I felt like it completely complied with Title VI as I read it in this brief here, which is very brief, I understand. And again, you know, forgive the irony here, but I mean, in plain English, it says, "You may not discriminate based on race, color, or national origin." And in my mind, as long as we treat everyone the same, then we're not discriminating against anybody. So when I, you know, drew up my amended version of this, I made sure that I spelled out very clearly that we don't intend to or permit anybody to discriminate against anybody for any reason. I don't know who to ask. I mean, you know, you're the Finance Officer, and so it, it, it seems a little unreasonable to ask you, but you happen to be standing there in front of the microphone, but I'd like to ask somebody if we're okay if we just don't discriminate against people, or, or do we have to go further with that and, and give special privileges to certain members of the population and say that we're going to speak English to everybody else, but you can just pick whichever language you like, and we're going to make everybody in the government speak your language, and we're going to make the taxpayers pay for interpreters to speak your language. Mr. Chairman, that makes no sense to me, and that doesn't seem to me, it doesn't seem to me that if we speak English to everybody, that we're discriminating against anybody, particularly if we don't even know their national origin, nor do we care about their national origin. And, you know, someone could say, "Well, they don't, they don't know how to speak English" or, or whatever, but, but they could learn how to speak English. You know, my wife, and I was telling the manager about this earlier, my wife speaks four languages. She grew up in a tiny province in, in a, in a, a long way from Beijing in China, and when, when she started to study, they told her she had to speak Mandarin, period, and so she learned to speak Mandarin. And then when she, she, when she went to business school, they told her she wanted to be in international business, she had to speak English, so she learned to speak English. She got done with that, her company moved her to Guangzhou, and they said, "You can't speak English, you can't speak Mandarin, and you can't speak your native tongue. You have to speak Cantonese." And so she had to learn to speak Cantonese, and never once have I heard her say that anybody discriminated against her. I think she's always thought that if you're in, if you're in Canton, you'll speak Cantonese, and you can speak any other language you want, but you can't expect a whole bunch of people to, to, to change their language based on whatever you're speaking. You have to speak their language, Mr. Chairman.
I understand what you're saying. All we, all we need to do is comply with what they're asking us to do. I mean, we've got to convert our language to the point where it can be understood by those who don't speak English. That's the way I understand it. Is that right, Ms. Blumenstein?
Spanish.
Ms. Mashburn, you got any comments?
The, the regulations, and we all know that, you know, you start out with a piece of legislation, and then you come, after that come the regulations. Even though the statute doesn't specifically mention the, a Language Access Plan, or to my knowledge, it does not, it, it's up to the bureaucracy to develop the regulations to carry out the intent of, of that piece of legislation. HUD has decided that a Language Access Plan is a necessary requirement to ensure that the intent of that legislation is met, and therefore has included that as a part of their requirements to be able to receive these federal funds. It's called a Language Access Plan, and as such, it, the language in the plan itself does address that we have to provide assistance, and they, as far as I know, pretty well spell out what type of assistance is necessary. They have determined that Iredell County, the only language other than English that we have to provide assistance for, as, as far as this grant, is Spanish. Am I correct about that? So they have decided that we, as, to carry, to carry out our responsibilities for this grant, we are going to have to provide a Language Access Plan, and, and I would agree with you. We're not going to do anything to discriminate, but evidently, they have determined whether it's based on some court case or, or whatever, they've determined that if you don't have access because you don't have, because you have limited English proficiency, then your rights have been, you have been discriminated against, and so they're requiring this as a condition of receiving these funds. Now, the unfortunate thing, and I'd like to explain this to the Board, we had a 2003 grant, that we didn't, we didn't have to do this. We didn't know that we had to do this until we had already accepted the grant and, and have spent, what, two, almost $200,000 of it?
Over.
Over $200,000.
Three twenty-nine. Three hundred twenty-nine.
Three twenty-nine? So we spent $329,000 of it. If, if they're saying this is part of the requirement, unless we feel pretty confident that we have a pretty good appeals process that we can go through and get a waiver for that, which is, in my mind, is doubtful, I would, I would have to recommend that the Board approve the plan pretty much along the template that they provide us, because we know that will pass muster with them, where if we adopt our own plan, we may be right back here in a couple of more weeks, whatever, maybe later than that, but having to go through this again, or having to make a decision as to whether or not we're going to be willing to pay the funds back that we've already spent.
Mr. Chairman, if, if, if failing to speak the language of an individual who cannot speak English is discrimination, that means that anyone who speaks Russian, or Portuguese, or any other language who comes to Iredell County will be discriminated against. That means we, by this plan that's been submitted by staff, that was suggested by HUD, it means any individual who does not speak English and does not speak Spanish, that means we will, by definite, by HUD definition, we will discriminate against them. And so I, I can't imagine that the intent of the Congress and the President at the time was, was for Iredell County to discriminate against certain individuals, but not to discriminate against politically significant groups. If the Constitution is to protect individuals, then it's to protect individuals. Now, my amended Language Access Plan protects all individuals from being treated differently on any basis. It, it encourages people to speak English, which is the language of opportunity. It is the international business language. It, it, we do nobody any service by suggesting to them that they shouldn't speak English, whether they live in the United States, or frankly, if they live in Spain. They're better off if they know how to speak English.
Your point's well taken.
Well, Mr. Pope, you've been sitting here listening to this. Have you had an opportunity to review the, the language changes that were recommended by Dr. Cadel?
No. I'm aware that it exists. I did see an electronic version of it today, but I, I probably spent a minute or two sort of scanning it, intending to pull the regs up under the title, but I never got a chance to do that, I'm sorry.
If, if, if we adopt a plan, it says we have to have a plan. If we do adopt the plan with the amended language, if, if HUD were to reject our plan, would we, and recommend that we go back to the original wording, would we be held responsible for the monies that have already been expended?
I don't know. It's a big gamble.
Well, I mean, are there, Mr. Mashburn, has any money been spent now that would, that us being paid back, or somebody being paid back, is going to be impacted by any decisions of this Board? Is this something we're looking merely at going forward?
This has to do with the present day money, right?
This has to do with the grant that we've already received and, and spent, most of it. That's the reason you did the amendment, first of all, because we didn't spend all of the money, and, and in order to finalize and close this grant out, the money that we spend has to match the grant application, and so we amended that.
If we don't agree with this madness, then we may be in jeopardy of being sued and have to pay some of the money back to the HUD that we've already spent.
There is that possibility, and, and I don't know the process it may take to get there, but that is a possibility, because this is one of their requirements. And, and again, you know, we can probably say all day long, we'll wish we'd have known this when we agreed to accept the funds, and, and certainly, that would have been the better thing. However, and now we'll say this, on behalf of the grant itself, a lot of good has been done in the county with those monies, so it's, you know, it's, it's not that the, the grant was not worth going after, it's just, it would have been good, of course, for us to have known early in the game that this was part of the requirement, and so that we could make you aware that it was a part of the requirement, and then when you made a decision, you would have had the full knowledge of that, that this was a requirement. We don't like coming to you at this point in time either, but we just feel that based on the wording and the letter that came to Mr. Norman on October the 12th, and the attachment to that, we, we strongly feel that they will be watching very carefully this, closeout of this project, and, and if it doesn't meet their criteria, we, that, that will not be the end of it for us. And we, we will never, until we get this one closed out, we would never be eligible for another one. You may not want to go for another one, but, but we would not be eligible for it until we get this one closed out. And we are eligible every four, is it three or four years, David? Every three years, we are eligible for $400,000 under the Scattered Site Grant.
Let me clear up one thing. The only required, the only language, language that we're required to actually display posters, we are required to display them in Spanish. If someone comes in speaking Russian, then we can get a translator on the phone through the language line, but we are not required to post, you know, to display posters on a regular basis in any language other than Spanish.
So we're still treating people differently, though?
Well, you know, I-
Speak English, or you speak Spanish, or you speak something else, and if you speak something else, you're being treated differently.
Well, look.
Now, I understand. I understand where you're headed, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Manager. You know, if, 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 if we don't know exactly what this grant requires, if it requires something more than just complying with the law, which it sounds like it does, and it's, and it sounds like, you know, we can't afford to fight the law, I guess, or not the law, but the, the lawlessness of the liberals and the Carter appointees that have decided what the law says, when we all know we can read English and we know what it says- what the law says, when we all know we can read English and we know what it says.
But this is-
If we can't, if we can't fight those folks, I get it. But it, it needs to be known to the citizens of Iredell County, it needs to be known to the members of this board, and it needs to be known to the HUD people and whoever else is interested in all this, that, that they're wrong and we're right. And so, I'll not submit my, my amended version if that's not the will of this board, and I, and frankly, I guess at this point, it's not mine either, but I think it's, it's ridiculous.
Johnson, you got comments?
Well, you know, end of day, HUD doesn't give a hootin' hell what we think. I apologize for that, shouldn't say that. I get a little frustrated up here sometime. I can't imagine in, on my wackiest day, that the people who put forth the Civil Rights Act in 1964 ever envisioned this thing as being interpreted this way. But that's the tyranny you encounter, folks, when you allow bureaucrats to make law, and that's basically what you've got here. There's no way in the world they could ever got a legislated body to pass law like this. And they're worried that somebody might be offended by it. Well, quite frankly, I'm offended that they're taking my money and giving it to somebody who doesn't think enough of me to learn my own language. But again, they don't care. They don't care what I think. The jeopardy to the county is if we don't adopt it according to their, their interpretation, then we place the county at risk as far as having to repay these funds. Boy, I sure hate to be in that position, but that's where we find ourselves. If that's the way they don't continue to do business, I'd, I'd be reluctant to, to support one in the future, because, not simply for this reason, but if you read through the body of the text, look at how many agencies you're subjecting yourself to possible litigation, initiated by how many? Four or five agencies? Any one of which could have somebody in them with an axe to grind, who might be looking some way to push the envelope of the law even further. So, to protect the financial interests of the county, you probably ought to go along with it, but it's no wonder we're broke, guys. Move to America. We'll repair your house.
I love it. We're 1.3 million in debt. We will borrow money from Chinese to fix up people's houses who speak Spanish, and we will give the bill to the grandchildren of people who speak English.
Amen.
God bless America. Make your motion. Let's go.
Motion to approve the original language access plan.
Okay, motion to major approve the original access plan?
No amendment.
Is that right? The original?
The original plan.
Okay. Any questions regarding the motion? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, likewise.
Thank you all. Item B, I believe you've already taken care of, when, after the public hearing, that was to approve the amendment to the plan. The next item is a request to approve the September 2010 tax refunds and releases. These are being recommended by the tax administrator. None of the county commissioners are involved in any of these, and so, motion to approve what is requested.
Motion to approve. Motion to approve. Any questions regarding the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed.
Ms. Campbell, with the Health Department, or the Health Director has the next few items. Ms. Campbell?
Good evening. The first item I have is a request for approval of two new vaccine codes and the accompanying or associated fees. One is for Pentacil vaccine, and one is for Pediatrics vaccine. The cost for the Pentacil is $75, and the Pediatrics vaccine is 65. And these are multiple vaccines rolled into one, so it decreases the number of injections the children have to have.
Any questions?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve. Any questions regarding the motion? If not all in favor, please say aye.
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 The next item I have is a request for approval of a WIC budget amendment. We have received notice of $8,288 to be used for two programs that are, deal with encouraging breastfeeding. The first is for a breastfeeding support group, and the second one is for additional staff training in, in breastfeeding. And that's for $8,288, and we're requesting approval of the WIC budget amendment and that amount.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, this was discussed at length at our last Board of Health meeting, and it was unanimous vote of the board to go ahead for it, and so, I moved for approval of the request.
Okay. Any questions regarding that motion?
I told Ms. Campbell I wouldn't give her a hard time. I have most respect for you, Ms. Campbell, I really do, but there's no end to what the government will do.
That was part of the discussion we had.
We'll repair your house, and we'll teach you to breastfeed.
Okay.
No wonder we're broke.
Okay, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed.
They worry about Republicans getting in the bedroom. We're into brass ears now.
I wouldn't have said that.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
The next item is a request for a budget amendment to receive $8,000 in Title X money. That's earmarked for, it's earmarked for sterilizations for non-Medicaid eligible patients. So, we're requesting approval for this budget amendment in the amount of $8,000.
Okay. Well, that'll cut down on the breastfeeding, maybe.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, a move for approval.
Motion to approve.
We're lucky.
Okay.
All in favor, motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed.
Okay. The next item is a request for approval to renovate the State's full and part of the Mooresville Health Department, including bidding out the project and the related budget amendment. What we're proposing is to finish another phase of our renovations. We started renovating the existing State's full Health Department in fiscal year '06, '07, and now, we're ready to move forward with this portion of the renovation. It would be renovation of the front desk, the medical records, the eligibility area, and the multi-service clinic areas, and that would be in the State's full office. In the Mooresville office, we're asking for renovation of the area on the second floor in which we would do, store the archived medical records from both State's full and Mooresville. This would be 100% Medicaid max dollars, and the amount not to exceed $200,000. And the Board of Health approved this request on Oc-, at the October 14th meeting.
Questions for Ms. Campbell? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
No movement, Mr. Chairman. We saw, we discussed this, and we saw pictures of the office down in Mooresville. It is haphazard. Records are disarrayed, because no fault of theirs, but we need to improve their working conditions. It's for the good of everyone in the county.
Okay. Any questions regarding the motion? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed.
If I can make a point, the, the last four items that we, that we have discussed, none of those involve, the scattered housing grant, the WIC program, none of these involve county funding. This, this is all pass-through money for programs that originate out of the county. We just administer it. So, if, if people are wondering if, if the world has lost its mind and gone crazy, well, it has, but it, it hasn't in the county.
Okay.
Thank you.
You too. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the next item is a request to declare some surplus property. Our purchasing agent, Dean Lill, will make that presentation.
Good evening, gentlemen. Iredell County Department has identified a rather long list of items that are no longer needed in their departments. Most of these items are unserviceable, some are obsolete technology that can't be used in their departments anymore. We also have a number of vehicles that have been removed from active service by our Vehicle Services Department, because they've met their useful life by Iredell County standards. We have another 19 vehicles that were declared seized vehicles, that have been transferred to the county ownership by the court system. Those vehicles, when sold, the proceeds from those will go to the school system. The list you have shows all of these items, their general conditions as described by the departments, and our recommended disposal method. We'd like a request that this board declare these items surplus, and that I be authorized to dispose of them by local auction, by online auction through Gov. Deals, or be placed back in service if possible. A great many of these items are being placed back in service already into one of the departments down in the Health Department in Mooresville, that they were getting ready to suit up for the environmental health section. We also have a resolution in this package for the purpose, for these purposes.
Mr. Manager, you made a note at the bottom here, and it sounds to me like this, this is in compliance with the note you made.
Right, absolutely. Mr. Lill and I both went over everything that's on this list, and as he indicated, most of the technology, we, we can't even get any support for those anymore, and so, there's a lot of that in there. The desk and, and most of the chairs, there were a couple of chairs, and, and anything that is there will be offered to other county agencies before it goes on the auction block, but I would doubt very little of it will end up being kept. Most of it will go to the auction block. I will say along this line that we just want to, with surplus equipment here, we, we try to make it last as long as possible, and we just transferred four law enforcement vehicles from the county to Mitchell Community College. Those, they were 1994s?
No, the 2004s.
2004s. They were 2004 law enforcement vehicles, but now, Mitchell College, that's where I got the 94. Mitchell College will use them, and they turned in four vehicles that they had that were 1994s, I believe.
That's correct.
And, and they were turned back into us, and we'll sell those as surplus. They'll use the four that we gave them as long as they'll last, and then they'll turn those back in, and we'll give them four more. So, you know, we're, we're attempting to do everything we can to make things last as long as possible, but there does come a time that they're just no longer needed by, by the county.
Where will the funds for the seized vehicles go? Will that go to the schools, or do that?
Yes, sir, goes to the schools.
Seized vehicles goes to the schools. That's correct.
I'd just like to ask one other question. I see you've got some Dell PCs, and I don't know the number of times we've all read in the news where some government agency has sold computers, and there's still information in there. Do you all make sure that everything is stripped from those computers, that no one could ever pull out any information?
All of our IT departments do certify that the computers, hard drives have been stripped, and that there's no information on them.
Okay.
That happens before we actually get those.
Any additional questions? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the sale.
Okay, any questions regarding that motion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Commissions, the next item is a request for the board to approve the concurrence with allowing the North Carolina Department of Transportation to use a sliver of property at three separate schools for road rights of way as a part of the expansion of the interchange of I-40 and I-77. The total compensation for this is $31,225, but, but again, it's just a sliver of land at, at each of these schools that is necessary to complete that project. The Board of Education, the Harvastatesville School System, has approved this, but since these schools are part of a COP's financing, and technically, the county owns them, it requires the county to approve or concur with that as well.
Motion to concur, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any questions regarding the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed.
And item J is to approve the minutes of the September 21st meeting and the October the 5th meeting.
Dr. Cadel?
No movement, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions regarding the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed.
Those are administrative matters, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, sir. Okay, we have announcements, announcements of vacancies occurring on boards and commissions. Crossroads Behavior Healthcare Board of Directors, one announcement. Animal Grievance Committee, one announcement. Region F Agent Advisory Committee, one announcement. And then, appointments to boards and commissions. We have a Notion Home Advisory Committee, one appointment. If anyone wishes to make that appointment. Okay. Hold on. Yeah. Okay. Motion to table?
Motion to table.
Okay. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. I'm finished, business? Okay. We have a public comment period. We have anyone wishing to speak? No? You may do so at this time.
I've got some things I'd like to say, but I think I'll wait till I cool down.
Okay, new business. County managers report.
Mr. Chairman, do have one item I want to bring to the board tonight, and I've called on Ms. Blumenstein to, to bring some information to you. Looking back, back, really back to 2008, when we started seeing a real downturn in the economy, if you recall, we came to the board in October of that year and made you aware of what we were seeing and, and the impact that it was having on our revenues. And at that time, we made a, took, took some proactive action, or the board did, to reduce the budget to keep us in balance, and it worked until February, and then we had to come back in February and ask you to do some more, and you did. And then, of course, as you know, the budget has been less and less each year since then. And, and just in keeping with what we have done in the past, we wanted to give you a financial update, since we have finished one quarter of this fiscal year, but we actually have only received one sales tax payment. But Ms. Blumenstein does have some information that she wants to give you, and I'm going to pass these around as she's going over this. Ms. Blumenstein?
Thank you. I've just put together some brief information for you to take a look at first quarter operations. We are just barely breaking even at this point. We have some revenues that are coming in less than we had anticipated, but I do believe that our property taxes are going to offset some of that, as well as if, if sales taxes continue, and I've said it time and again, one month does not a trend make, but when I look back over the years, I can tell, apply, and look at the ratio of the July sales taxes to the total for the year, and I did come up with a number to do some trends there. In 2008, and there's a separate worksheet right behind this, in 2008, the July collections was about 7% of, of what the annual actual was for the year. In '09, it was 9.26, in FY10, it was 8.63, and that's on the 1% point of delivery. If something sold, or something sold in Iredell County or in another county, but it's delivered here, we get that 1% sales tax. So, that's how I came up with what I was going to project based on that one month, because I'm going to tell you, it's tough. I've probably run 20 worksheets in the last week, looking at month-to-month, quarter-to-quarter, floating quarters, and it is so volatile from month to month, that it's very hard to get a feel for what it's going to be. What I can tell you is that July of 2011, excuse me, 2010, for the 1%, was 5% over what it was July last year. what it was July last year. It does follow a little bit of a trend in that what we received in July, August, and September of this year, which represents April, May, and June of last fiscal year, sales was about 17% greater than the quarter prior to that. Some of that's probably timing, some of it's probably the Department of Revenue moving refunds to us or distributions to us, the time that they process, uh, returns and so forth. But there was a little bit of an upswing there. So, when I base these, um, numbers, or take my July and extrapolate an annual, um, total amount of sales taxes, I came up with almost a million dollars over budget. All I can tell you is that I'll, I'll watch that very closely. You know, I send reports every month, and then I backed it down even another 5% because I feel, you know, there's nothing for me to base that on, except for what we've seen for the last four months coming in. Certainly, our unemployment's not any better. The percentage rate's gone down, but we have 2,266 fewer citizens employed in August of 2010 than we did in August of '09. I think it's going to, if we, if we get back up to our peak level, which was, I believe, in May of 2005, I certainly think it's going to take us several more years to get back to where we were at pre-recession levels. But at this point, the best information I can give you is that I think we'll collect a little bit more in revenues than we budgeted for property taxes and sales taxes. Registered deeds revenues, first quarter, they're below where we thought we would be when I annualized that, will be about $187,000 short for the year. Ambulance fees, about $150,000 short. Your ambulance fee, um, excuse me, registered deeds, that's based on the housing market for the most part. Ambulance fees, people are, are slower to pay. Inspections department, when I just look at what we've done for the first quarter, if I'm not mistaken, they're down about another 30% over where they were last year. Isn't that right, Mr. Mashburn? And permits and inspections, 810,000 short for the year. And Mr. Mashburn and Lynn have worked on some, and we, we've all worked on some ways to reimburse some of the loss there, and that is the energy grant that they've been working on, that's currently approved by the Department of Energy. About another $30,000 we can get from that. Um, there is another energy grant that's pending Department of Energy approval, $34,300, that'll expand some of the money, uh, for some more projects. Then there is another energy program, so administrative and survey, where they'll actually go in and survey all the county facilities and see where improvements can be made to the HVAC, reduce our energy cost. That would provide funding for labor of about $89,000 if it's approved. Donna brought before you a while ago the Medicaid Max project for the Health Department, both in Statesville and in Mooresville. We believe that there are some projects that can be performed, the work be done by building inspectors. That's about another $33,000, Lynn is estimating. And then if we keep one of our building inspectors at recreation through December, um, that'll be a reimbursement to the inspections Department of about $4,800. So, pending those approvals, we may be able to get that down to about $618,000 loss. Planning Department, it's about $52,000 I'm annualizing, they'll be short for the year in revenue. That department does not pay for itself. There are some permits, um, and inspections that they perform, but they do a whole lot more than just those things that they can charge for. And on-site wastewater fees, um, even though they went in with a very conservative budget, if we continue for the next nine months, as it did the first three, I believe those revenues will be about $150,000 short. So, we are, right now, just barely, um, scraping by, but we will keep you informed every month, and I'll continue to send the reports for sales taxes and unemployment. Um, Department of Fiscal Research Division of the North Carolina General Assembly, they're reporting that North Carolina is unlikely to see any robust expansion anytime soon because the housing and the financial problems that sent us into the recession take a whole lot longer to correct themselves. They believe it's going to be much slower, a prolonged, slower recovery. I think it's pretty much been the sentiment of this board when we first started talking in, in, um, 2009, in February of 2009, that we were prepared for about three years, and it's going to take every bit of that, if not more, in my opinion. Consumer demand's got to rebound, and business investment production's going to have to continue to grow, and there's just not much, um, desire to do that right now. I believe with the state looking at a $3.3 billion shortfall for next year, that it, it's going to end up affecting Aridale County. I think we all know that's probably going to happen. State agencies have been, were directed at the end of September to submit by October 29th budgets for next year, showing 5%, 10%, and 15% reductions. I understand they're talking to cut as many, from 10,000 to 12,000 state, um, positions to try to get within budget. The state has what they call sunsetting taxes, as they made some one-time cuts last year. And of course, income tax revenues are way down, um, individual and corporate, because even if the corporations pick up taxable revenue this year, they've got lots of losses to carry over. So, they're looking at big problems there. If the state would back out on its commitment in Medicaid, where we swapped our 2002 sales tax, it's called Article 44 Sales Tax for the Medicaid, and they don't give us back that Medicaid, um, or, excuse me, that sales tax, I believe at a minimum it's six and a half million dollars, and probably by this time next year will be even greater than Next year's not going to be easy, and I think we've, we've known that all along, but I just want you to know that we're preparing for it. Mr. Mashburn and, um, Tracy Jackson and Ron Smith and, and Sandra Gregory and I have been talking about it since Ron and Sandra's been there, but Mr. Mashburn has really, um, stressed this since July, when we meet every Monday morning, to be looking at ways to, um, become more efficient and consolidate services, if at all possible, and do everything we can to manage the funds that you have appropriated for us. I'll be glad to answer any questions you have. And Mr. Johnson has called me Miss Gloom and Doom for a long time, and I intend to maintain that reputation.
That's what you expect from your finance director, be pessimistic.
Mr. Johnson, before, yeah, I, if you're going to make some comments, before you do that, I would like to make you aware that we're under a tornado warning right now, and, uh, will be for probably another 30 minutes. Uh, it's, uh, it's not been cited, but, uh, we're under, we are under a tornado warning, so I just want to make you aware that we probably want to try to move to lower quarters if we can, and pretty soon.
Will you tell me to keep my comments brief, Mr. Mashburn?
That's what I'm saying, sir.
So, they heard you were getting ready to make some, hence the warning. Wasn't that funny?
I didn't think it was funny, well, Mr. Most Senior Member. Just want to be clear on that. That was not funny, Mr. Sharpe.
I just commend the staff on, on their stewardship of this budget. I know it's been tough. They've done a good job. They've looked for ways to cut, and they've stretched things about as far. Uh, folks, I've said this for quite some time now, that increasingly budgetary decisions that impact this, this county were increasingly made two hours east of here in Raleigh. I think that, I think that's an adequate or pretty accurate, uh, description of what's gone on the last few years. I think they will pale in, in comparison to what will happen in Raleigh next year. I think this state budget has been mismanaged for years. They continued to spend money at a time when revenues were falling. I don't mean to be partisan, but every time Jim Hunt leaves the governor's mansion, he leaves the state broke. The first time he did it, somebody with some sense came on and cleaned up his mess, and the next time, a bigger bunch of fools showed up and made it worse. And, uh, I, I don't see, uh, things changing much over there, uh, unless there's a change in, in the legislature to stop some of this madness. And if they do, then it's, it's still going to take a while, because there, there's still nothing in this economy by the decision-making people. You talk macroeconomics, either on the fiscal side or the monetary side, there's nothing being done right now that are going to improve the situation. Everything being done right now is going to make the situation worse. And that's going to negatively impact the state budget, and the state budget is always picking on their little brother, the county government, and, and that's where they're going to come next year. And those decisions are going to ma- be made two hours from now, uh, two hours east of here, and we're going to have to try to figure a, a way to clean up the mess that they've made, and, and that's where we are. And, uh, I'll, I'll just say this, the summer of recovery was a lie. It's just, yes, that was, that was just political propaganda. It has not occurred. And I promise I'll say this and shut up. In this election cycle, the biggest lie that has been told, that I've heard, is when the President of the United States says that corporation gets tax cuts for sending jobs They do not. They get, they pay a higher tax if they don't. If you will draw a comparison between the corporate income tax rate in this country and some of the developing economies, and even some of the mature economies, the corporate tax rate in this country is significantly higher than it is in other countries. That is why they make capital investments there, folks, and that is why they do not make them here. It's a business decision. If you make a major capital investment in this country, you will wait years to depreciate it off your taxes. You can make a capital investment in other countries, and you have, you write it off in one year. Ask yourself, if you are a business manager and you're charged by a multinational corporation to maximize profit, are you going to make a capital investment in the United States where you write off that capital asset over a number of years? Are you going to locate it in the country where you depreciate it in one year? If your job is to maximize profit for your corporation, are you going to hire people where your corporate income tax is 15% to 17%? Or are you going to put it in a country where it's 35%? If you want to know how people are going to behave economically, look for the incentives. And we have a group of people who are incompetent when it comes to business. They have no, no business experience, none whatsoever. They've never run anything, and they think you can continually tax people, tax people, and it will not change their behavior. Well, it does. Mr. Mashburn's worried about a tornado, so I'll shut up, but if there's not a change, if there's not a change soon, folks, it's going to get worse and worse, and, and we will be like Japan, like Economist Magazine said, the last decade.
I do have a, a question, if, if I could. Uh, Mr. Mashburn, we are, um, inspections is kind of hemorrhaging around the $800,000 level, and it looks like we've made up for some of that with about $200,000 worth of different grants and projects that we hope to get approved. Um, I mean, is, is the plan to continue bleeding at, at that rate, or, you know, if, if the, if the work demand is that far down, you know, at, at some point, are we going to look at, at staffing levels at some of these departments where the workload is just, is gone?
And we are already doing that. Um, we're, we're not, the only people that we're keeping are people that we can cover their cost, uh, with, um, budgets that, um, that would be spent somewhere, contracting it out, or temporary help or whatever, and we're just, we're covering some of the cost for that. We have had some layoffs already, and this, the funds, so far, we've been able to cover the cost of the personnel. I, I won't say dollar for dollar, but we've been able to cover most of the cost for the personnel from these other grants and so forth. When that ceases, then, at that point in time, we will have more people than we have work for them to do, and at that time, we'll have to see some more layoffs. We are picking up a few permits now, but they're going to have to come much faster than they're coming out for us to be able to continue to do that.
Okay, so, so people are still working. We're, we're not at the point of idle, uh, an idle workforce.
No. You know, I'm, I'm not saying people working as, as busy as they were, but we still have to have the people there.
I agree.
To serve the people that we do have to serve.
Yeah, I mean, you, yeah.
We just don't have to have as many of them, and we don't.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Mr. Mashburn, you have anything else?
No, sir.
Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.